Meeting to order. It is Tuesday, July eighth, twenty twenty five, two o'clock. Ocean Shores Library, five seventy three Point Brown Avenue Northwest, here in Ocean Shores. Uh, roll call, please. Commissioner Bricker.
Here.
Randy Johnston. Here. Steve Kern.
Here.
Richard Peterson.
Here.
The Ward. The Lawless is here. Commissioner Bees is not here. Uh, motion to approve Commissioner Bees and I'm not sure about Commissioner Johnston. Uh, their absence.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Approval of our meeting agenda, motion to approve our meeting agenda.
So move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Alright, so passed. Approval of minutes from our regular City of Ocean Shores Planning Commission meeting on June twenty four. Uh, motion to approve those minutes as written.
So hold.
Few second. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
So moved. Okay, we'll move on to uh, public communication. Anyone have anything for us in the house? Any thing they'd like to share?
No.
And we have no one afar at this particular moment? Okay. So. Having done that, we'll move on to the presentation. Scott.
Oh.
And Rick.
Sure. Do you want to give any intro or anything?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll just uh, give a brief introduction. Um, this is Scott Betcher and Commissioner Ripoll from Grace Harbor County. And they are working um, with several jurisdictions in Grace Harbor. We've kind of formed a little coalition. Uh, with people um, within the shoreline jurisdictions that are having issues with uh, erosion coastal resilience. Uh, and we're working through methods to um, to, to maybe gain a little more. Understanding of what the other jurisdictions are, are having as far as challenges. And then uh, you know, coming up with some funding opportunities and those kind of things. And, and so. We're in the process of applying for grants. Uh, when I say we, I mean Grace Harbor County is uh, is the lead agency in this grant proposal and Scott's. They've got a presentation to kind of talk about coastal erosion and resilience investments uh, that we're working towards in the Grace Harbor County area as well. So Rick and, and uh, Scott, the floor is yours.
Just, just to be clear, I'm, I'm here mo- mostly to support Scott and I've got. Maybe some comments to add at the end of this.
That's important. You gotta have support.
Alright, it's all down to me now. Okay. So uh, my name's Scott Betcher and I'm a private consultant. I've been working for Grace Harbor County. Um. I've spent a lot of time working in the Chehalis basin on flooding issues and um, um. What I have seen up there is that um, the name of the game to successful solutions that require money is collaboration with many people. So um, this coastal erosion focus that the county is leading is um, built around. Let's be collaborative, let's not be competitive. Westport, Ocean Shores, the county. The regulatory agencies, bring them all together because if we're all together. The likelihood of us getting significant sums of money is that much greater and especially in the climate that we're in now where some of the federal money is drying up. So, that's a bit of opening. Um, the presentation is coastal erosion and resilience investment strategy. Those words are purposeful and we'll talk a bit more about them as we go through the presentation uh, next. Okay, so for a bit of context coastal, uh, here's a picture from nineteen thirty six. Um, you are way out there in the right arrow and Westport's way out there on the left arrow. Um, this is an aerial photograph. Um, we could spend hours looking at it. It's kind of like looking into a tide pool. You can't stop but. Um, the point is um, two peninsulas, sandy peninsulas, um, they house your communities. Um, next. Here is a um, picture too that I find just wonderfully fascinating. Um, you can see Ocean Shores. This is nineteen sixty six. Um, you can see the um, uh, the jetties. Um, you can see Westport and then um. Down beyond that is Willapa Bay and then um, the little window for our Zoom is covering. But you can actually see wh- where the Columbia River is too, um, and those mountains down there. So um, the, the point with this is um, also sand peninsulas. Uh, the coast is all about sand. Um, you, and you know all this, um, but this helps me to understand uh, the context for where. Um, we're hoping to uh, move forward in. So next slide. Uh, a Google Earth picture. Um, the purpose of this photo is to show that we're at the edge of the continental shelf. You know this. Um, but this is interesting because you can see the Columbia River and the canyon um, that comes off of it. You can see the Willapa and uh, subsequent canyon and then as you go north, you see Grace Harbor. And I believe the canyon further up north is called the Astoria Canyon or something like that. This is uh, when you have um, you know, uh, transition zones from deep ocean to shallow ocean. Um, that spawns a tremendous amount of marine life and uh, this is a life zone and that. Fun- the function of your communities is attributable to that life zone um, in some way, shape or form. Um, next. So, we're gonna do a little Google uh, Earth here and um, this, once you click on the Google Earth link up there in blue, yep. Okay. You'll, we'll get this presentation sent to you if you want to um, on your own desktops, click on the link. Um, what you will see. Yeah, um, there is a Google time lapse, so it shows you from nineteen eighty four to the next to twenty twenty two. And it's just a rolling screen. Um, and you can see that how the sand moves up and down the coast and it decrees, it grows. And then it also um, um, erodes. Um, then you'll also see a feature in there, north of you is Connor Creek. And how Connor Creek has itself. Oh, there we go. I knew if I talked long enough, we should get it a lot of time.
I just needed the exit full screen.
Yeah, so then press the dismiss button on the left-hand side, that little window, yep. And then press the, okay, so can we zoom in a little bit with the right um, zoom in? And then shift the, the image up more to the center of the screen, just drag it, yeah, to the right so we can see all of the north beach, so. And zoom up one more time. Okay, then. You can press D. I want you to look at a couple, yeah, a couple things. Um. This is Connor Creek. You'll see how that's moving north.
North.
Oh, I'm sorry, there it is, yeah. That was Capable's. So you can watch that, you can, we can do it a couple times. So eight nineteen eighty four up to twenty twenty two, you can see how the north jetty and the accretion. And uh, you can see how the little sand islands, they move, come and go. Um, and then, you know, if we were to look at the south beach, you can see how that accretes, sand grows and how it also erodes. And so um, to me, being new to your coast i- in an in-depth way. You know, I'm going through my own sort of educational process to understand how this coast works and how the sand works and how the jetties contribute to all that. And so, Google Earth is a tremendous way um, to understand this. I'm doing some work in Connor Creek. And um, just knowing that Connor Creek is moving north, not so much because the river is punching itself north. But it's rather the beaches are growing and crowding it. Um, and so um, again fascinating stuff. Um, to help understand where uh, we reside and where we live. So if we can get back out to the PowerPoint. Okay, next. Okay, so um, this comes from the Department of Ecology. Now we're getting into erosion. First, several screens were about trying to understand the context of where we live. These screens are about um, the erosion. So, in Ocean Shores, and you know a lot of this. Um, uh, Oyip Bay is eroding on average sixty feet a year from two thousand seventeen till twenty twenty three. That puts a tremendous amount of, of asset and jeopardy, uh, infrastructure, um, RV parks. Uh, Damon Point, that was, I guess. You can um, and so what Department of Ecology has done over a long period of time is they have done um. Uh, surveys and so that is all scientifically um, established um, where the erosion. Um, uh, the rates, what the rates of erosion are. And then the blue, that's what's red. Um, and then the blue that proceeds north from there is where the sands are growing. And then there's a, there is a little Google Earth um, time lapse in the lower right-hand corner, uh, where the word here is. Yeah, click on that, perfect. Open that little video up. Yeah, you may, you've probably seen this one. So, this is obviously erosion. So the county, um. We can go on to the next slide. The county has known about Ocean Shores. Westport has their issues as well. The county has known about those. Um, Ocean Shores has competed and got grants and. Um, Westport um, has done projects and gotten funding. Um, but the county hasn't had a real kind of a significant role for the, the whole coast. Um, and we are at some level an interrelated system. We're not just Ocean Shores and not just Westport, not just. Um, unincorporated county shoreline, worth um, a shoreline. And so um, I was asked to um, um, come on board in February. Um, and help the county apply for a FEMA grant. Um, a cooperating technical partners grant. You all have gotten those in the past, I believe. Um, and so we submitted a grant um, to FEMA on the fourteenth of February for. Um, hundred fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. It was just the executive summary. Um, um, we've learned from uh, Rin Lam, who is the person of FEMA, um, that. Um, we're supposed to be getting ready, because something's coming. I don't know when, but, but I, I'm told that's a good sign that she has called twice the county administrator Sam. Um, um, Sam Kim, to let him know that something is gonna pop here. And that she took the effort to call him is a good sign. So, so we're waiting. Um, when that, huh?
That something is money.
Well, that something is what's called a NOFO, Notice of Funding Opportunity, and then we would have to respond to that. However, I'm left to believe that the fact that you get to that point is pretty much a sure thing. And you'd really have to do something dumb to not get, get the money. So, and Marshall can, can.
The way the grant processes work with uh, with FEMA is you make application, an open application that anybody can apply for. And you provide, provide a brief summary and need. And if your summary is accepted, if they see enough need or um, your plan seems to be put together well enough. Then you'll be invited to make a full application and provide more detail. Um, we did this in our CTP grant that we received to do the uh, submerged jetty evaluation. And so, this is another grant that um, that has come through. Once we received the uh, notice to make the full application. Um, we were, we were moved through that process and we were granted that funding. And so we're at the same point with this coalition is we've provided that initial summary and FEMA sees enough value. And uh, and, and we're far enough along in the reporting that we've provided and stuff like that. That they're making, making us aware that we're going to uh, ask you to make a full application for the grant. And then that funding, um, in our previous experience, that funding followed fairly quick. So we're, we're excited to receive uh, you know, communication from Ren at the. At FEMA, because that's a, that's a very positive sign.
So, you know, don't count your money till it's in the bank.
But we're optimistic.
However, we're optimistic. Um, um, and I should say too, um, this wasn't just me putting together the grant. It was me working with the city of Ocean Shores, city Westport, Department of Ecology, Department of Fish and Wildlife, the county. Um, and this coalition that Marshall just referenced, we don't really have a name for it yet, so. Next time we'll have a name for who we are. Um, uh, the second thing, uh, the, the county had me apply for um. To host a couple fellows from Sea Grant, which is up in the University of Washington. Um, we didn't get the two fellows. However, um, Department of Ecology has some fellows and uh, they want us to work with them and they. Department, Department of Ecology has offered to lend those fellows to us for some work too. So, so that's good. Um, and then lastly, the subject of today is NIFWIF, National, National Fish and Wildlife Federation. Um, we essentially in May took the application that we provided to FEMA and we just rejuggled it around. Bit more responsive to what their sort of interests were and submitted. Um, they have asked for us to um. Uh, submit a full proposal, um, which is what I'm working on right now. That's due on the seventeenth. Um, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. So, next slide. So, um, what is the um, the proposal? Essentially, there's a graphic on the bottom of the screen there with four numbers. Number one is community capacity building and planning, then it's site assessment, then it's final design, and then it's restoration. So, the National Fish and Wildlife Federation, NIFWIF, um, has kind of a pipeline concept. They want you to come into the first door and then um, if you're doing well, then you're more likely to get funding for the second door, the third door, and the fourth door. So, we are in the, we spun the funding request around this notion of community capacity building and planning. We don't have any capacity. The county has spent a little bit of money to hire me and that's sort of like the sum total of capacity that the county has. Um, we're trying to get capacity with this funding so that we can develop. A coastal erosion and resilience um, investment plan. Where is it that we should be investing? What kinds of policies should we have in place up and down the coast? Um, what kinds of pilots and test cases should we do? All those good things and let's put it into a, a common um, game plan. So that then everybody in the world knows that if we fund A, then that can lead to B, which can lead to C. Right now, the method of funding is sort of a shotgun where, you know, oh, here's a grant opportunity. I'll apply for that. Here's a grant opportunity, I'll apply for that. And we all should, we all chase money. But it's sort of discombobulated sometimes and you would hate to take money that would obviate uh, some other need later in the future. So, um, the county is trying to um, help the coast um, be strategic. Um, and then so doing um, more broadly successful up and, and down the coast with their.
Um, so let me jump in on that because.
Absolutely.
That's where I'm gonna make the pitch. Um. I don't speak for the commissioners, obviously, but what, what I'm talking to them about and what I think we're agreeing on. Is that this idea of just chasing grants isn't really. Getting us where we need to go. You know, if we don't get the grant, then we just kind of s- we have to s- stop work for a while. So, I'm proposing that the county uh, actually make a budget line on it. I think we're calling it the. CTP.
Okay.
Uh, but if we come up with a better. Countywide.
So cooperating technical partners is what.
Cooperating technical partners, yeah, always.
Good that.
But anyway, so I believe that not only should the county make an ongoing commitment so that we can continue this work. And then we're, we're ready when grants come along. We have a plan. If, if, if we have a plan in place. Then it's gonna be easier to execute the plan and, and, and show that we've got something going. And so the, one of the reasons I'm here is I think Ocean Shores and Westport should also commit. To a budgetary line item to su- to support the cooperative technical partnership. So that we can start moving these projects forward. And like on the one graphic that you showed, you showed some. Different erosion parts on the bay. I also believe that we can, if we can put an overriding plan together on how we respond. To particular erosion sites. Uh, then we don't have to step through the permitting process each, each time we do it. And that will save a lot of time because, because we'll say, when these sort of things are happening. We're able to do this sort of response and I, and I think we can move faster on that, so. That's basically my ask, is that the communities bring uh, some funding. To the, to the umbrella and that, that we, we s- we're more independent. And not, not reliant on state and federal money all the time.
I was just gonna ask that. I, I think I already know the answer to the question, but you know, that's how it works. Um, have we approached the legislature with this concept? And I think it's probably too new, but maybe for next year. Um, yeah, get Grace Harbor involved. I mean, I get that. Because you look at the coast, that's where it's located, but the state also would have an interest, hopefully. That it's, it's part of the state of Washington as well. And so you might get some traction by getting some involvement there as well.
Right, I mean, um, we're also reaching out to the Chehalis um, partnership, flood partnership. Because you know, some of the sand is coming down, right? And so, we gotta be addressing it holistically. And I think that, so what I'm representing, I believe, is the county taking a stronger leadership role.
Yep.
And um, Scott's earlier point, I, I think when we collaborate and get a group together. We can probably do bigger projects.
Yep.
That will be um, so- solving the issues rather than just band-aiding them. So, I think that's what we're hoping for.
Absolutely.
One of, one of the partners in this coalition right now is at the Washington State Department of Emergency Management. Which we will be meeting with that team.
Nice.
Uh, on the fifteenth.
Yep.
Yeah.
This is, this Thursday, two days.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Where did the month of July go? So, so yeah, they, they are a partner in this group and uh, also um, the Washington State Department of Commerce has been a very active partner. Uh, and, and that they funded significant amounts of the work that we've done over the past year and a half, two years. So, they, they are in the box.
So I think it's important that we all talk about it and to the people that we run into and. The communities that we sit on, that, that we talk about this engagement where we're all really working together. To support the beaches, the economic vitality that's here, right?
Yep.
Um, so it's really important to.
That's good news. Thanks for that.
Can I ask a question? This seems like a mammoth undertaking. Are there examples?
I will get to examples on slide eleven. So, let's go next slide. Okay, just a few things on this slide. Um, upper left-hand corner is um. Uh, coastal resilience dashboard with yellow. What those are is just projects that. N- NIFWIF has funded for community planning. Oregon's whole coast has gone through this process and engaged all of its stakeholders on developing um, coastal resilience. Okay, and so, we wanna have a bunch of yellow dots on the Washington coast. Um, and the fact that there aren't any is probably a good thing for us. Um, that, you know, they want us to have a, a dot on the coast. So, that's that one. Um, picture in upper right. Um, one of the things that we want to talk about and, and maybe step up as a pilot. Um, is the Core's Beneficial Use Program. They can take their dredge. Material that comes from the SATS up down the Chehalis, so it goes into the harbor. Um, you can use that for beach nourishment where you, and other places have done that. I understand the Corps knows they can do this, but they just haven't done it. And I don't know all the, the bureaucracy of the Corps. CL District, um, but the picture there, um, for those of you who might be familiar, that's Jettie Island in uh, outside of Everett. Um, they've been drun- dumping uh, dredge and sand there since the thirties. Um, and you wouldn't know that it's not a natural island. And there's a tremendous amount of habitat. It's a barrier now. Um, it's a tremendous public benefit, um, use of that material as opposed to just dumping it in the Pacific Ocean. So, um, we hope through this um, str- strategic investment plan. To do pilots and do um, test cases and, and spotlight them. On the bottom are two pictures that uh, um, Marshall took Commissioner Hall and I out on uh, June the twelfth. Um, Cobles and Oyip Bay. Um, and then um, uh, logs and I don't remember the name of that particular. Um, place, but um, that was, the road ended there, I think. Anyway, um, uh, two examples of the kinds of solutions that um, the National Fish and Wildlife. Federation type of people like to see. Um, and so, um, we know the work we've done in the Chehalis. Um, like on the SATS up, that log structures do a tremendous amount of success in slowing erosion. Um, for those of you who um, might not know, the Montesana Treatment Plant, for example, was being hit headlong. By the Winichi River. Um, we put hundreds of log structures in front of that. Now the Winichi River has moved away. And all that energy is dampened and sediment has dropped out and what was just sheet pile that was failing. Um, looking at thirty or forty million dollars to relocate the treatment plant over a long time period. Was saved in two years through just dumping a bunch of logs in front. And so, um, if we get smart, maybe we can, you know, have stockpiles of logs and wood. So that we can do an emergency project without having to go through a long arduous, like permitting process as if this is the first time I've ever seen it in my life. Which is not the case with a lot of regulatory agencies. It's not the first time. Um, so, um, what the commissioner was saying about, you know, can we be smarter through the permitting process? I think we can and there's lots of analogues out there. So, anyway, a couple of good examples of nature-based solutions that have been proven to work. And we will amplify those in our write-up on the seventh, for the seventeenth. Next. So a couple of questions for you, um, um, if we have the time. Um, what does resilience mean? The whole, I, we talk about coastal resilience. Um, that's one of the buzzwords associated with all these grants and this kind of effort and. Um. You should be thinking about what that means to you and your city, um, and your communities. Um, another question is how best to engage with um, people in your communities? Um, we're at the very front end here. We anticipate that there'll be a heavy amount of engagement all along this process. Because um, we want everybody to be saying the same story. And if you say the same story across multiple jurisdictions, the likelihood of the legislature funding you is, is greater. It's a lot greater. Um, what innovations and new directions should we be considering? Um, we know there's a significant downsizing in the federal government and then the federal, the money flow that we used to depend upon. And as the commissioner is saying, we're not gonna depend upon that as much. And so, what kinds of public-private partnerships should we be thinking about? What kinds of other? Um, you know, the world of wetlands mitigation and mitigation banks has been tremendously successful in bringing private money to wetlands protection. When you need to mitigate, maybe those kinds of programs have, are, have analogues, maybe they're analogues for us. What are the knowledge gaps? Um, it's a very complicated world out here and not everybody possesses the same level of knowledge. Um, and a lot of people have a lot of academic credentials behind their names that makes it harder to even talk to them to understand what's really going on. So we need to sort of normalize the knowledge and so that we all as elected leaders, as. Um, councils and commissions can um, help jurisdictions legislate in ways that. Um, and fund in ways that um, are gonna be responsive to the needs. Um, so anyway, those are questions that we will continually revisit. We don't have to have the answers today. Uh, you'll get this PowerPoint. Um, you may think about those. On the right, few lists of uh, parties and stakeholders. Uh, one stakeholder group I forgot about is the newspapers. Uh, journalists have a tremendous role to play in helping to communicate. Um, and you know, if you can communicate to your journalists, then you can communicate to those that read the papers and then online news and things like that. So, I think they're actually a very key stakeholder we need to put into the mix. Okay, next. So, you asked about, um, has this been done before? Um, the picture on the left is down in um, the Cl- Lower Columbia Estuary. They received one of these grants and they um, uh, Bay-to-Bay they called their program and they did a community resilience. Uh, great model to look to from that. It spun off all sorts of projects, okay? Um, and the right uh, in outlining green are four squares and um, the top three. Um and the right uh in outlining green are four squares and um the top three are um investment plans that I helped um with in the Chehalis. So when I'm talking about we need to sequence, we need an investment plan that has um staged and sequenced and identified projects. Um. I say that coming out of my own personal experience um with the SATS up river, um with the city of Chehalis and the port of Chehalis. Where they have intractable funding, uh they have intractable flooding problems that take multiple funding cycles. And the legislature, being smart, they're not gonna just give you money willy-nilly. You may think your project is important. However, they have a lot of requests, but if, if a proposal comes forward that's sequenced, it's logical, it, it proves the gain from the investment. You're more likely to get something. Um and especially if one of those plans is. Supported by a broad coalition of, of interests. And so. My experience is if we could put up on the page in the future, um a picture showing the um. Grace Harbor County Coastal Investment Plan. Um i- it A would help us with funding, B, it's something that transcends changes in elected leaders. Our elected leaders change all the time and you know, we, we have a lot of knowledge loss. And we rely upon staff to carry that knowledge through those sorts of transitions. However, um. Having something that uh can withstand time um is beneficial to us. And the last screen on the bottom there is just a, a, from the Chehalis. Um all those governments, the logos of those governments. Um they are all working together in the Chehalis Basin. They've been doing it for going on fifteen years now. And um they receive seventy-five million dollars every biennial. Five or six funding cycles. They have gotten that because they all are rowing in the same direction. Um and so we have to be an entity, a geographic entity, which is the coast. Um, so that's my pitch. Next. Oh, this is the thank you slide, I think. Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
So um, so I, I hope that if we get this funded, that you'll see a lot of me and we will have workshops and we have engagement opportunities. And that you all will say the top three things that are so important and they'll be the same things that Westport says. And then unincorporated, if we get to that point, then we've really come a long way.
Is this along with the Damon Point that's happening now? It's that they're restoring it on the coastal part of it?
Damon Point is an eroding problem for sure and it's the kind of problem that would have to be addressed.
But they're working on it now.
I think we'll defer to Marshall.
Yeah, yeah. So, so this project or, or this coalition. Our, our funding and our, the work that we're doing today is, is finite. It's limited. Um the Department of Commerce actually provided us some more funding um for work to be done this summer. Um which we're, you know, working on finalizing that design, but once we're done with that. The, the funding opportunities are, are less available.
So this is kinda combining Damon Point.
This, this will continue to feed into it. Instead of just uh the city going out on their own and trying to secure funding. This coalition will try to secure funding for projects in Ocean Shores, in Westport, uh maybe, maybe Aberdeen or Hoquam. But we will all have a list of projects and priorities and, and try to seek funding as a group to um, to complete those projects. Get them shovel-ready and ready to go, have organization to the proposals. And then make funding um as a group, all speaking with one voice. And then hopefully start picking off these projects as uh, as the funding becomes available. In the past, we have competed with Westport. And I can tell you today that the dredge foils that come out of Grace Harbor are being dumped on the south side of the South Jettie to try to nourish that beach. If we all start speaking with one voice, maybe the dredge spoils and, and we'll get some on the north beach too. Or maybe some that need to go somewhere else in the harbor. Um there's a lot of needs um spread out over this geographical area that's covered by Grace Harbor County as, as our lead entity. And uh, and it seems to make sense based on one of the last slides you looked at where you have the Chehalis Basin partnership, which the city is a signatory to. Um you know, they're receiving vast sums of money for all these projects that they're doing in the basin. We wanna start a more focused group that can do the same thing and, and leverage our, our collective. To get that funding to focus on projects, you know, in our area of concern.
So the first step is to get it approved, to get the grant. And then, and then we know what is gonna be done to try to prevent it.
So I submit the full grant on the seventeenth. Then we are supposed to hear something by November. So then the way things work, maybe the money's here in January. And then for the next year and a half, we're working really hard to develop the plan and the priority projects and things of that sort.
So you get approved before you develop the plan?
Yes, we have, we don't have the money now. We have to be approved to have the money. Yeah. So we're.
And so the proposal that I'm making, if our communities start to put resource together every year. Then we can work on plans before, outside of getting financed. So the way it works now, you have to say, hey, I wanna work on this plan. Can I have a grant? Then you get the grant to do the plan and then once you get that done, or maybe you got the grant, or maybe you had to wait two or three grant cycles to get the grant. And then you can put together a plan for the project. But what the county is trying to suggest that we do is maybe. Put some money aside so that we can continue to, to not have to get grants for that first step. If they're available, we'll get them. But if they're not available, we'll keep working because we'll ha- we'll pay for it within the community.
So within the community, you're kind of saying, what are the options is to raise the taxes to get it or is there other ways of getting it?
Well. It, what we're thinking about in the county isn't raising taxes to get the money. If, you might have to raise tax if you were gonna try to do like a multi-million dollar project. But we're just, we're just discussing how we allocate within our budget. Wha- what we, what we prioritize, you know, that. The councils, the, the commission, county commission, you know, we have a lot of um needs that we're trying to make. But what we're bringing this current commission is bringing a higher priority to invest in the erosion control. On our beaches because of the effect that it's having on our beach communities. So what we're doing. So as that moves up on our priority, then we'll fund those, that priority and probably. Do, have to defund another priority because it's not our desire to raise taxes.
Right.
Just, just so you're clear.
Any other questions? Still no one?
There's a question right here.
Sorry.
I've heard the talk back and forth on this. Is the quinels involved in this at all? As far as sitting in part of the council or helping get it?
They will be part of this process.
Yeah.
And we, we're sort of like a heron taking off. We're a little bit lumbered.
We have though gotten away from our starting point.
Yeah, we have taken, we've left the ground. We're dragging a foot out again.
We have, and the, and the city has engaged uh the quinels um with, with this discussion. And so they will definitely be a key partner, especially as, as they're having, you know, property in the city of Ocean Shores in an area I concern. So. We've had those conversations already.
Yeah, Thor.
What sort of regulatory excesses or, or zeal will we encounter with these coastal resilience programs? Any, any ideas?
The hardest is when you want to do some sort of structures below. What would be the mean high, we'd below a certain water line. So like in Westport, they did um the um. Um cobble revetment and they protected those condominiums and they were able to stay just above the Coors jurisdiction. Out, so they're out of the Coors jurisdiction. So um. To the extent that we can stay, know those lines and stay out of them, all the better. And um. As an example, um in the, the, are you familiar with the SATS up river? The SATS up river is highly eroding and um it was exposed twenty foot above the river and ten feet below, just vertical soil. Um no structure in there whatsoever. And um. If we wanted to put log structures into the river, we're full-on permitting process, full-on two years. Um we just put the structures right on top of the riverbank. And then an act of nature forced them into the water where they engaged and we didn't have to go through a lot of the permitting process. Okay? And so if you're willing to lose a little bit of land, sometimes you can gain yourself. Time that you would have lost it anyway by going through a two-year permitting process. So um. The, the point is that um. You, you can find ways through this stuff with enough planning and, and force and forethought and everybody involved early on. And we had all the regulatory agencies involved in making that decision to put these structures on top of the bank, um knowing that they would cascade in and they did. Um so.
Another thing is that there's a little bit of a reluctance to, to try things like back to the cobblestone. It's successful, but talking to a college, you know, you just go like, well, then why don't we expand it? Well, let's take a look and study, you know, we've only been out there for three years, you know, we wanna see the long-term effect and, and things like that. So there's, there's kind of a, a slowness in some of these agencies. That I think by getting a plan together and talking about it beforehand, I, I think we can eliminate some of that slow. Move a little faster.
Absolutely.
And it was a very effective out here in Ocean Shores that. The cobble and uh it was at a lot lower cost than we've done down at Cohasset. So there's. So I think there's also needs to be a need to try things to a certain extent. And I think some of the agencies are a little slow to embrace trying things.
The, the more we find success in nature-based solutions, which is other than like giant jetty rock. I mean, there are places where that big jetty rock is the only thing that will work because of the ocean forces. But when you start getting into some of these inland waters like, like what we dealt with at Oyot Bay this year. Where you can start using smaller stone, things that are replicated on riverbanks and, and uh, you know, if you go up the coast to Ruby Beach and, and. Way off in those areas, what we have on our beach down here is the same thing they have on that beach up there and that's nat- naturally placed. Um that came down the rivers and washed up on the shoreline. That wasn't done by man. So. If we could get into this nature-based solutions and leverage those um with success. Then the permitting pathway seems to have less pushback.
Yeah.
And uh, and so if we could get into a mode of creating these prescriptive methods of permitting. Using nature-based solutions in areas where it's appropriate. We can, you know, I think we can definitely get to the point where our permitting uh time and effort gets reduced. That, that would be my goal from a regulator at the local level is if this works, why go through all these hoops again?
Right.
Let's apply the same thing that worked here to here and let's keep right on moving down the shoreline as long as it keeps working. And uh, and we're not deviating from, you know, nature-based solutions that are successful. Uh hopefully we'll come up with a permitting that is more streamlined like Commissioner Hole was looking for. And so. That's kind of where we're, the, the direction we would like to see, you know, the local communities and, and the state hopefully support that.
I have a question. I'm looking at the grant. I've done matching contributions and it says twenty thousand dollars. Who is putting up that twenty thousand dollar?
Commissioner.
So it's not each air, it's not each area? Okay.
No, the, the county put the, put the matching money in.
Okay.
That, so, so this is, we're talking about a single specific grant, but as this coalition builds and we have. More grant opportunities, there, there might be a need for communities to participate if the matching funds uh become larger, you know. So um this is a one-off um for this first grant that's gonna kind of get things moving um where the county is stepping up and. And uh providing the match.
Right, and so that's what I'm speaking for our communities and that need to be ready for that. And, and talking about it, especially as we're coming around into a new budget cycle. Uh let's just make that part of our discussion.
If it's not on the list, it goes nowhere.
Yes, exactly. It's gotta go on the list.
I get it on the list so you can kick it around.
That's right.
Any other questions? For?
Well, thank you very much. Very, very hearing more of us.
Yeah, they'll be, they'll be, for those of you that are at the council meeting tonight, uh they'll be presenting at the council meeting with, I believe, Commissioner Rains.
Commissioner Rains will be here tonight. I have to run off. But yeah, thank you very much.
Welcome any, welcome anytime. Come back with any updates.
I hope so. I hope to say we've got the funding.
That'd be good. Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you guys for your.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Just two things.
So I hope, hope to see you soon.
I'll see you. Yes, yeah. And that'll be at the uh Convention Center.
Where is it?
The, at the Convention Center, up there next to McDonald's.
And, and is it gonna be the same presentation?
Yes.
It was a, it was a pleasant late addition to uh, to the agenda. So that's good. Okay. Next item on our agenda is uh election of a sec- uh secretary for the planning commission. With the passage of ordinance eleven thirty-eight. Um our thirty-day period has passed and in that which uh changed. How boards and commissions are run here in Ocean Shores, uh we're now required to have a secretary. So commissioners, do, do we have a volunteer to be secretary uh for the rest of the year?
I will, I will volunteer.
You'll do that? Okay.
What does the secretary do?
Uh takes the meeting minutes.
Yes.
Any other volunteers? Okay, if there's no other volunteers, we have a, a show of hands on who would like to see Randy Johnson as the secretary for the rest of the year.
I think we should put our hands together.
Thank you very much. And he'll be on time next.
Didn't allot enough time for major construction malfunction in Hoquam.
Yeah, the traffic will do that too.
Yeah, and if I'd had my GPS, it would have rerouted me, but no such luck. I was stuck. So. And I didn't have anybody's phone numbers. Oh, I emailed you. That's difficult to do while driving, so.
Need, need to fix that. No problem.
Okay.
Okay, the next uh item on the agenda is our public restroom subcommittee follow-up. Uh Mr. Kern, Johnson, any, uh, any follow-up on uh? What you've been able to assess uh to the community?
Interesting data.
Okay.
My wife Susan um has a shop at the Boardwalk Shops. And um it's in the front and it's on the right side for the south side.
Um, what's the name of it?
Um Susan Lilly and Company.
Okay, super. Formerly the dusty trunk in that.
Yes.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Um, so she came home on Thursday, last Thursday. And um. She was complaining about the number of, of people who are coming in and asking for uh to, to use her bathroom. And as I mentioned before, her bathroom is her storage. Um so it's not really available to the public. Um she also mentioned there's a lot of people who are uh, I, I don't know whether a lot is the right term, but. Um who are entering the store simply to use the bathroom if it's available. They, they're not customers. So I said, um, I asked her. Uh over the next three days, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Can she just get a piece of paper and put a tick? Um uh for uh every customer, non-customer who asks to use the restroom. You wanna take a guess at how many requests you had to use your bathroom?
Three days, let's see. Uh yeah, forty-seven.
Ninety-three.
Oh, alright. I said correctly. Okay.
Um, and so what um the owners of those shops do generally is they. Is they refer them to the Playtime Family Fun Center. Um, who apparently has a fairly large uh, set of restrooms. Um, but that's. So I looked at, I did some research on the cost of building a, a restroom. And of course, it's dependent on size and. Uh, complexity, uh, multiple stalls and sinks. Uh, number two materials, three labor and design and four location. And um, depending on, on those four factors. Uh, it can range from eighty thousand dollars to five hundred thousand dollars. And uh, as a next step. What I'd like to do. Is um, distribute, uh, first of all draft, uh, a really short, simple. Survey, couple of questions, two or three questions. Um, with board approval. And then um, start distributing, you know, meeting with, with owners. Um, a lot of these small shops, it's, it's, it's run by the owners, so. Um, they're available. And I think they all suffer from, from the same issue. The, my, my concern is that um, by doing so. I would certainly be raising expectations that, you know, something that some. Time in the future might be done. And uh, I'd sort of like to get your opinion on. On that issue and the issue of me. Showing up at stores. Um, introducing myself as a member of the planning commission. And then asking if they would be willing to fill out this, you know, three or four question survey.
Yeah, I do have some thoughts. Uh, commissioners, any thoughts? On that?
Well, after uh. Last me, last meeting, didn't we discuss that, that somebody was going to, wasn't there people that were going to go? Uh, around and ask people that do have. Public slash, you know, restroom facilities. If they would be willing to have uh, their business posted. As, you know, like on a sign someplace saying this is where you can, you know, thank these people for the use of it, whatever.
I, I could do that at the same time.
Randy? Well, I was just gonna say, if we could put together that list and divide and conquer, I'd be more than happy to. Also do the same thing, it's a lot of businesses and.
Yeah.
I've talked to a few that. Talked to a lot of. Uh, neighbors and stuff too about the scenario of coming downtown, especially over this prior weekend. Where there's. Tens and tens, thousands of extra people in town.
For some reason, I went to the IGA at uh, around noon. Yeah.
I think I wandered in there.
So, I, I like the idea um, and the expectation. Um, I've said it here publicly many times. I'll put things on the agenda, we can kick it around, see where it goes. There's no guarantees. Because as we all know, even if we all agree, we're an advisory group and we're gonna need help. From the city council and the mayor to get those things done. But I think that's a great idea, if you and Randy want to come up with um. Three, four, five questions, something that's not gonna burden uh, the owners and something short, so. They're gonna be willing to and uh, participate in a, a survey like that. And when you do that, please feel free to say you, you're part of the subcommittee of the planning commission. And we're trying to look at. Opportunities for public restrooms. I mean, we can't guarantee anything. I mean, I met with the mayor. After uh, council uh, last time. It was on my agenda, it'll be on my agenda again tomorrow. When I meet with him again. And we talked about signing. I mean, right now, where's the public restroom? In Ocean Shores, we talked about that last, last meeting. It's across from the Shiloh. That's great, but who knows that? Cause there's no signage. Right? There's no signage. That's where the public restrooms are. Um, are they adequate? Well, we could debate that until my hair grows and that'd be a long conversation. Uh, no avail, but the fact of the matter is, that's, that's the only public restrooms um. And the city is maintaining them now. But are they adequate? And certainly the answer, I believe, is not on those Fourth of July weekends or event weekends. Here in Ocean Shore. So um, I think it's, I think it's very good that we talk about it. And if we can come up with a solution, uh, that's great. But the first thing we can do is, you know, and Thorn volunteered to buy two sons, right? Uh, to make a donation. Um, uh, signage is the big thing. So that we can at least, we've got signs up now going, public parking, that was a great addition. But now how about public restrooms? And so, we're gonna keep working on that for the signage part. But I think your idea of. Free questions to ask. Uh, owners of the shops uh. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's a good idea too, but I can't imagine one shop owner saying, no, I don't want restrooms. I'm gonna say they want them. So, we gotta, so you gotta figure out the questions to ask. We know they want them. So, what's next?
Yeah. Location, 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 right? I think there's something about real estate or location, location, location. So. Yeah, you've heard that? Yeah. Um, so, yes, we need them, but location, where? Do we put something outside of the convention center? Which do have public restrooms open, but only during their open hours. So something outside there, something centrally located. Um, as we've discussed in this forum, I don't know anyone I've talked to wants. Uh, porta-potties up and down uh, the corridor. So, what are our options? So, just have to think outside the box a little bit um. And, and see where it leads us.
Yeah, I have only. Uh, comment that my wife was asking some of her friends at work at the Costco up in Temwata. Quite a few of them came down for the Fourth of July celebration. One of the comments that she shared with me. It's a little concerning because we kind of noticed it too. We went to watch fireworks, we went on a tourist, both of our tourists. Coming up on a sand dune and watching there. And there's only one. Porta-potty on that entrance, and there was at least ten thousand people out there. And same thing at all the other entrances. And this person. Came down, said her daughter was complaining that there were, she called them Johnny cans, but. Honey buckets, whatever. And where her daughter went, uh, they went on the main exit, which I think is the one by the Shiloh. And her daughter was just appalled, but she said there was people out there just squatting and defecating and doing whatever, like. Downtown Seattle and San Francisco, you know, they were, because they were drinking and. There's no place to go, so they just wander out in the sand dunes and let it go. And. I don't know how the city could plan. For the type of. Mass humanity that shows up on the Fourth of July. I mean, it'd be, it'd be monumental to try and. Mathematically figure out how many porta-potties you get for a hundred thousand people.
Well, I can tell you that they ordered double of what they ordered last year.
Yeah.
And last year, they ordered double of what they ordered.
So what's it, what do we have to now?
I, I don't know the exact amount, but I've been in the planning meetings and.
So, I mean, the question is, is it adequate? Uh, we probably, I don't know, probably, probably not. And so, let's see where this takes us. Just like we did with biking and walking and uh, the parks department before, let's ask and see. See where it leads. We do know that we need some signs to the. To the, the one set of public restrooms that we have. And right now, we don't have that. So that'll be step one.
The last meeting, my wife and I took another trip down to one of our competitive. Places down the Oregon coast, Cannon Beach.
Uh.
And I paid particular attention to the fact that they don't have any signage for public restrooms. And the only one that I. Know for fact is the one on the backside of city behind the parking lot. And uh, it's not even as big as the one we have down here by the Shiloh. And they get mass tourists in there on specific weekends and stuff too, or they're. Um, Sandcastle Days is ridiculous. Um. So I don't know where we can go to. Research how other coastal tourist. Communities deal with this thing, but uh, I know that. You know, a whole line of porta-potties like on the back of a flatbed truck or something doesn't sound like a solution. It's not very attractive. Um, and it's uh.
The only thing I could think off the top of my head is to uh. Invoke Marshall's way that he did the other day or last meeting, is just do a Google search. Of, and pick a, pick a town, pick a city and look for public restrooms and see how many come up. That would be the quickest and easiest way, I think, based on what Marshall did. He came up with two here in Ocean Shores. The, the State Park and the ones near the Shiloh, I think is what you found. Those were the two. So, but that would be the quickest and easiest way for, you know, I, I would sit and have a martini and do that. Uh, if I was doing it. Um, but. Um, other than that, you'd be, you'd be chasing it, I think, whereas you can use Google for that. To get an idea. Would it be one hundred percent accurate? I don't know, but it'd be an, an idea.
It's a data point.
Well, in, in reference to that, because we, we have a couple other restrooms, both boat lodges. North Bay and. That's the one, tell me, the other one. Yeah, sure, both have restroom.
But they're not, but they're not listed as public restroom. So, again, um, how do, how do we get that information out there? Uh, so the people know where, where they're located. Um, and in both cases there. Um, of course, it doesn't help us very much in the corridor, but it's still information that would be good. It might be on the parks map. Hey, I know you're on it, I can tell by your non-verbal there. Um, it's probably on the parks map as to where they are, but again. How do we, how do we let people know? So that's part of the challenge. Go ahead.
The Shiloh Inn is not being used part of the bar part of the restaurant.
Yeah.
Why not investigate that? It already has plumbing and stuff in it.
Yeah. The, yeah, the Shiloh is an interesting concept.
And we need to probably consider maintenance, who's gonna clean them because these are out here. Or they are on the shady side. Have you been in them recently? Not recently, okay, they've changed.
Yeah, the city has taken over the maintenance responsibility of the public restrooms across from the Shiloh. Chancellor Lomar. So they have, they have improved. Are they perfect? I'm gonna go out on a limb and say no, but uh, definitely an improvement. Um. Marshall, your thoughts?
You can really quiet here.
I spent enough time in the super utility to know that this is, you know, it, it's a tough deal. Um, what, what I would caution against is, is trying to accommodate that Fourth of July weekend. Um, and come up with something that will cover, you know, the other, the other fifty something weekends of the year.
Yeah, agreed. Cause the big events, they're anomalies and you're probably not gonna be able, Sandin Sodas, Hogwild. Um, Fourth of July.
Yeah, those, those, it might be appropriate to, to just uh, supplement whatever we have as a permanent solution with. You know, the, the portables. Um, for the large, I mean, most large events you go to, there's, there's lineups and trailers we've gone to. Um, running events and other types of events in the big city. And even, even in the big city, you go to the uh. You go to the um, Seattle Center for the Hot Chocolate Run. There's, there's rows and rows and rows of. Of porta-potties. You go down to the Columbia River Crossing. There will be rows and rows and rows. I mean, so for big events like that, you're almost reserved to that portable temporary type stuff. Uh, I think what. What I would be focusing on in this group is, let's find another centrally located place in downtown. Where we can put, you know, some decent public restrooms to accommodate your, you know, your normal July weekend that's not the fourth. So.
Is, is there any other weekend that is comes close to the Fourth of July?
Um, Sandin Sodas is pretty big, and so is Hogfest, if they're sponsoring it in Ocean Shores, it's, there's, there's a pretty good. Pretty good crowd with that.
That's the last weekend of July.
The peak flows at the wastewater treatment plant, number one is the Fourth of July. I think um, Sandin Sodas is like number two and Hogfest, they would go back and forth. So those are your three big weekends where. Um, the utilities are being taxed.
Not labor day?
Um, not, not to the same extent. They're, they're busy weekends, you know, you, you can probably say there's maybe five busy weekends that are, that will bring, you know, in excess of, you know, fifteen or twenty thousand additional people to town. Um, so.
Thor? I, I think the state isn't irresponsible for not providing something for those three or four big weekends. We can, like, I've, I've seen at, at special events. Uh, portable bathrooms based on trailers. They bring in four or five of them. Nice thing is you don't have to build your own place. You don't have to comply with the ADA rules when you build something. Which can make our restroom cost a half million bucks. We don't need that, but we need to spend probably ten thousand bucks a weekend for some of these things.
How about one of the uh, community parks that already has one restroom add on to them? That'd be a different location.
Yeah, so. The community club does have parks that do have restrooms as well. And they are open, but again. It's, it's a case of knowledge and again proximity. Because where you're talking about the people are, generally speaking, is in the corridor. Um, and not necessarily, you know, a Damon Park or Bill Ellis or. Chinook uh, or others, so. And here's, here's the map. There are what? No, so, okay, so, yeah, if uh.
So, the uh. Purple little houses here. Are the restrooms and they're on the ledge down at the bottom. At their restrooms. Other restrooms. And then each park that has restroom facilities is listed that it has a restroom facility. And there's a few of them that do.
And those, those are the city parks. Those don't take into consideration the community club parks.
Yeah, I don't know, are those, are those open to the public or do you have to be a community club member to utilize those?
If, I'll just say they're, they're open to the public because they, they're, they're not carded facilities, so they're open.
Yeah.
How do you have to be a member of the community club?
Yeah, you could be a visitor or.
I work here, but I don't own property here, so I'm just curious if I could use the bathroom or not.
Right, and, and they're just, just.
You can borrow my card.
Just for purposeful discussion, there are properties that are opted out. So not every property is opted into the community club. Okay, well, yeah, Randy and, and Steve, if you'll put together. A couple of questions and bring them back next time, we can get this going. That would be wonderful.
Randy, what's your phone number?
How about after the meeting? Yeah, we'll talk about that after the meeting, so it's not out for public. Yeah. Okay, the next, uh, if there's not anything else, the next item is uh, the planning commission handbook update. Uh, I'll be ready with my pages one through twenty-one um. With the addition of the secretary, I have a change to make as of today. Um, so if you can bring those changes or, or anything, or send me a note. That you've looked at your pages and there, here's, here's the changes or here's. Uh, there is no change, and then I could put something together and get that uh, proposal. Uh, on our agenda for next time.
So, so if there is changes like mine or downloads, do you want the downloads?
Yeah, send them to me and I'll incorporate them into a graph version of the changes. And then once we get all that and then. We approve it, then it goes to council for approval, because they must approve uh, the update in here. And with that, there's nothing else. And with that, there's nothing else. Um, Marshall, anything for the community liaison report today?
I do. Uh, so I handed out a picture of three lot in the downtown core. And this is, uh, this is the old bakery building, uh, in, on the center lot. And, um, the developer that owns these three parcels, um, is contemplating, uh, building, um, transient rental facilities on these, uh, four units, townhome style, uh, units. And then subdividing those for individual ownership, which this, uh, this particular developer is on a few of those kind of projects, uh, in the past. And, and then they would be built such that, um, that they could be used for a transient rental and you could either own it or rent it out or, or whatever you wanted to do. But before he gets too far into this, he wanted to know if the planning commission, um, maybe had a different idea on how to best utilize those properties or, um, if, if you guys had an idea where you would like to see something different than, um, than a transient rental type facility in there.
Is this just, um?
Right across this, yeah, across from the Shiloh parking lot there. Yeah, right behind the convention center, west parking lot. Yeah.
It's four units? He's wanting to.
Well, he's got four parcels and the density, um, requirements of the V one zone, which is what that is classified as. Um, I, I think would allow up to four units to be built, um, for that purpose. On all, so it would be a total of, um, twelve, twelve units on the three lots. And he doesn't have a configuration or, uh, building concept yet. He just wanted to throw that out there to the planning commission and see if you guys had strong support, strong opposition, or somebody was thinking something else should be located on that site and had an idea. Um, he's, he's open to a discussion now. And, uh, asked that I bring this, you know, to the planning commission for, for a discussion.
Bathroom.
Bathroom.
Well, in Europe they charge for bathrooms, so there's a revenue generating activity. Um, oh, interesting. Well, that's, that's interesting. Um, he is, he is taking his time to get, uh, some decisions made. Oh, wait, he doesn't really need our permission.
He, no, he doesn't need, he, he's, he just wants to, uh, you know, have buy-in from the community if he's gonna start down a certain pathway. If he's gonna run into a, a brick road, then, you know, he might look at other options. Or if somebody else has a great idea that, um, you know, I don't put my name on things like that because I don't want to be responsible for a business failure.
Right.
But, um, you know, if, if there are other things that you would want to consider, um, he's open to the discussion. So.
Thank him for us. Uh, that's, it's very, very kind of him to at least consider us looking at it. So, uh, seven, five, six Ocean Shores Boulevard and, uh, I, I, I realize this is just a representation and not an actual.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is, yeah, exactly.
But, uh, if commissioners could, uh, wander by and take a look at that and come back next meeting. Uh, if you have any thoughts, um, then we can provide some feedback.
Yeah, speaking of property. Right down where the hotels are.
It would provide brand new, um, transient rental housing in the downtown core, which as, you know, as I listen to discussions, um, we've got a bunch of, you know, older motels that are in different states of repair or disrepair. Uh, this might be kind of a, a bright spot, you know?
And no re, no rezone necessary because.
Rezone necessary.
B one.
It would require a conditional use permit to subdivide those for individual ownership, but, um, yeah, he's been successful with that on a couple of other projects and. So.
You could do a planned unit development too, right?
Uh, planned unit developments require at least one acre, so if, if he needs this, um, yeah, I haven't done the square footage on it. You think it's two acres? So, yeah, potentially that could, could turn into something like that.
Okay. Any other thoughts on this? Anything else, Marshall?
So, yeah.
Okay, any commissioner member reports? Nothing. I will just mention that we have, um, four items that we're going to be directly providing at council tonight that had been passed here. Uh, in addition, uh, we'll also have the public hearing that we did last time at council today. And, uh, the sign proposal that we did last fall, um, will be on the agenda and, uh, uh, Councilman Hartman will be leading that discussion. Based on our input. So we'll have about six items, uh, that we've had our fingers in on the agenda tonight. There's nothing else?
No.
Two hundred reports? Um, public communication, any thoughts, any further thoughts? No, still there's no one from afar. Yes, ma'am.
New proposal of building that the investor would, um, give the people that are running the businesses now a chance to have the same business there or cut us out or?
Well, it's, he's just, he just wanted to put his proposal in front of the planning commission, um, to, to, to get a feel whether they would be, um, supportive or, or whether they would oppose that type of development. He's not necessarily looking for other, um, other input from, he just wants to know from the regulatory body. Um, you know, would they support or oppose, um, a development like that in the downtown core in that particular area?
So who would it be up to to, that, that business that are there continue their?
Oh, he owns, he owns that place already.
Right.
So, and he's not operating a business out of there currently. So what he would do would, would be probably tear down the old bakery and then redevelop the property into, uh, four unit segments. Um, you know, possibly with a theme or something like that. Um, he's done, he's done several of these, uh, type of developments. Each one seems to get better, so.
Anything else? Yeah, our next meeting will be Tuesday, July twenty-second, two P M. Here in the library meeting room. The secretary will be Randy Johnson going forward and, uh, you have a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Done. Three eighteen.